Am I good? Is it on, Scott? Good evening. We do have a member of the Ministerial Alliance with us here tonight. Pastor Pete.
Father, we just want to thank you for this night where our city's leaders are coming together and talk about stuff that probably so many people in the communities don't really want to talk about or think about. But these folks here are employed and volunteer, and we thank you for them. And so they need wisdom to take care of the business of this city that we all love and appreciate. And so as they talk about some of these things, we do want to thank you, Lord, for this preservation, this money that's been set aside for the streets. Everybody's going to be excited about getting their pothole filled in and roads repaired. And we appreciate that, these things like the small things in life that you bless us with. Lord, these other business things they look at, I'm not sure where they're going at on this compensation package, but I know these things can be very debatable and, you know, what's the right way. And so just guide them there and think about master plans, whether it's the parking wreck or any other things that's going on in the community. Just give wisdom because you know the big picture even greater than we do. And so we ask your blessing tonight in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Rachel Kilmer.
Here.
Tracy Newcomer.
Here.
Melissa Johnson.
Here.
Kelly Neto.
Here.
Sarah McMichael. Pam Pope.
Here.
And Mayor Dana Webb. Here, thank you. The next item on the agenda is new business deletions or continuances. We do not have any of those this evening, so we will move on to the next item, which is public comments. City Clerk, do we have any public comments?
There are none.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. These items are designated for the Board of Alder Women to approve by unanimous consent. And the items tonight are the approval of the February 3, 2025 Board of Alder Women Meeting minutes, expenditures through February 27, 2025, and the January 2025 financial statement.
I make a motion we approve the consent agenda?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. The next item on the agenda is unfinished business. It was a presentation from the last meeting that did not happen, and it will not happen tonight either. The person is not present. So we will move that to next meeting business. The next item on the agenda is the presentation, it's new business, is a presentation for Sni Valley Fire Protection District regarding the upcoming tax levy. That will not happen tonight due to a situation. So that will be extended until the January, or until, excuse me, until the next meeting, which we're not sure when that is. The next item on the agenda is discussion, consideration, and possible action regarding a resolution accepting the 2025 City of Oak Grove Parks and Rec Master Plan. Scott?
I really didn't have anything additional for this meeting, other than if you had any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Nothing's changed since the last meeting.
Have you ladies reviewed everything? Does it all look good? Any questions about any of it? Next steps or anything like that?
Yeah, I mean, I guess, what is the first thing you envisioned putting into place from the plan? Have you thought about that far yet?
So I think the first steps will implement what we can in-house. It's not going to, for cost-wise, that we can get started on, like the media marketing and stuff like that. The $100,000, I think, that's budgeted. I was waiting for direction from the board if you wanted that to go to the park board to come up with an idea off of the top priority list of items out of the master plan and come back with something to present to you for recommendation on how that's spent.
Can we discuss that now?
Yes. So it's actually going to, that's the Wi-Fi password. It's actually going to be on the, we can discuss it, but it'll actually be on the agenda at the next meeting, correct, Matt?
Yeah, I mean, I think you guys could discuss what
Direction.
direction you want for that.
Yeah.
If you want it to come back and be a discussion amongst the board of how to spend the $100,000, or if you want the direction to go, you know, down to the park board, a mixture of the two. But yeah, probably the next step would be for you guys to decide if you want it to be placed on a future agenda, either here or at the park board.
Yeah. So, any thoughts?
Dog park.
You've had, you've had, you've had a, you know, a while, you've known it's coming because it's been held since, what, December? I think it was.
Yeah, it was added as part of the budget.
Yeah.
Would you say Kelly just kicked it to the park board? Is that what you said?
No, I said dog park.
Dog park. That's Kelly's response.
I mean, I thought would be like hone in on a category and then kick it to the park board for specifics.
There you go.
My thought.
Okay. Okay. Any other thoughts?
I wanted to spend just a little, I was going to come back with a list of analyzing just a little bit from each section, you know, and what made the most sense. Little things like trees take a long time to grow. It'd be nice to see a little bit of that money and get started, you know, that kind of thing.
Dog park, yeah.
Okay.
So we all just kind of go home, do our homework on it, and then come back to it next time and put our heads together and then send it back to the park board would be kind of how we would handle that.
Do you guys, how do you want to do that? Do you want to, you are allowed to vote on it, or it can go to the park board, whatever you come up with, and then let them review it and then them bring it back to you. Either way.
I mean, I think the park board should definitely get their, an opportunity to make a pitch or whatever, like what, where they would like for it to go, they have done so much work on it that, you know, it would be good to have their input.
So should we kick it back that way then? Just kick it right to them now and then have them come back to us with what they think is the best use? Or is that a waste of time? Tracy, you're on the park board. Do you think there's going to be a consensus or do you think this is going to be like a?
I think giving them options would be.
Okay.
It's a lot. It's a lot.
Okay.
So options might be good. The next meeting is next week? No, two weeks?
Next week.
Tuesday.
They meet before we meet again?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yes.
I think, I mean, well, I don't know. I don't, I don't know. I'm not prepared to give an opinion.
I think we could say some things that we would like
Sure.
to emphasis on and then get the Park Board to put forward the pieces that they, you know, because it is in two weeks. I mean, there's a lot of time back and forth, but I do want to hear what the Park Board thinks would be best. Well, yeah, but I think if we know already like what we want, I think we could let him know like what we, what we think, and then I want to hear what they have to say.
I mean, something like trees, for example, is mentioned. So depending on the size of tree you're looking for, it could be anywhere, the larger ones are above 500. So if you figured anywhere from 500 to 1,000 for each tree, for sizable tree to be planted, then we could try to hit a number of trees each year, for example. Not try to do it all in one year, but to try to always have a plan that we do so many years.
I really like the idea of the dog park just because it's something tangible that can get put up weekly. So I think anything that, any other ideas that are like a tangible thing that people can use that can go up quickly is what I think we should ask.
A big statement.
Yeah. Like a statement.
I don't think we can ignore, though, the fact that the number one request was connectivity.
Yeah, that's, that's not, we can't pull that off for $100,000.
Yeah, yeah.
We can't, we have, we have to.
I mean, how much trail can we lay for $100,000, like 100 yards maybe? You know what I mean? Like, I don't know. I just don't, I guess that's something they could look into is how much impact could we make on that with?
That's why I think all of that was kind of spelled out individually within the park.
Just not with numbers, though.
Right. And dog park was up there.
Yeah.
I would like to see signage knocked out. I mean, personally, I would like to see some signage up.
Didn't we just put signage up recently? What kind of signage are you thinking?
With the new logos and things she's referring to, I think.
Yeah, and I mean, like, if you're at this park, here's where the other parks are. You know, like, just, do you know about these parks? Like, if you're at, you know, Webb Park, did you know that there's Caraway Lake?
Like an information board type of thing?
Well, just a metal sign, like, here's where, if you're here, did you know that you can take your kids here? Did you know you can take your kids to fishing at Caraway Lake? Did you, did you know that you can go, you know?
No. I don't think that was in the comp plan, though, was it?
What about, what about if you guys email Scott maybe your top five things that you're interested in before next Tuesday? You said next Tuesday, right?
Yeah.
Before next Tuesday?
Perfect.
Then the Park Board and Tracy will be there, right? Tracy will be at the Park Board meeting. She can report back. She can even call each one of you and let you know how it went. Or you can attend. You can always attend a Park Board meeting and see what goes on.
What time is it up? Is it six or something?
Six here.
Six here?
Mm-hmm. You can attend. And then that way we'll at least get it rolling and it won't just keep, you know, delaying that, that funding.
Yeah.
And then as far as along that, as we go along that, a big emphasis was writing the grants. So can we get updates on grants that you guys are searching for? And trees is a good grant to write for. You can usually get trees.
As well as there's, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. I think I probably interrupted. I've done grants and that type of work before, and it is literally a full-time job. Who is going to really put the focus on trying to get that done?
It'll ultimately be my responsibility if it's all in the department, but we'll divide up and conquer as best we can. It does take a lot of time. There are some things that we can't do in the department that we'll need assistance with, whether it's the title searches, for example, that we have to have. Private grants are a little easier. You don't need a lot of that information. So it does, does take some effort, and it also usually has, like, it wants dedicated funding for the grant upfront, so sometimes you have to come back to the board for a resolution. So sometimes it's a juggling act on making it work, but
Yeah.
there's also budget workshop that Mid-America Regional Council's putting on in April that I'll be attending and maybe one of the, another from the department I'll take with me.
Thank you. I was just wondering.
So we're
There's a lot of
Yeah.
money out there that we could at least try for.
There is.
And it's also one of those things, if you hear something, please let us know. Like, we, we don't want to miss something because we didn't catch it. So if you hear something, let us know and we'll look into it.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Well, I mean, you can also connect with some of the other cities, too, and ask them, what's their writing grants for? I mean, as I attend other city events and ask, you know, about their park grants they write, I mean, they probably write anywhere from 10 to 12 a year, and so that's just doing a search or getting out there and finding out. And we just, I think there's just a lot of money out there that we're missing out on, especially now having a park master plan.
I totally agree, and I don't want to seem like I'm being negative in any way, shape, or form, because I love grants and they're, we definitely want them. The challenging thing is communities our size, they're, it's a little more difficult to get. Like, there's a Philip 66 basketball, outdoor basketball grants. Well, that's typically for your Kansas City, your large impact areas. NFL does grants for particular spots. It's usually around their NFL team that they have in the area. So there, there's a lot of grants out there. Sometimes it's based off of what has the biggest impact. We tried really hard to get one of the Field of Dreams, the Miracle Fields, and we just didn't have the population, nor did we have the need. So we had tried for that, I think, a decade ago and was, came up short. So there are, it's frustrating because you put in the time and then you don't get the reward, so, and then all that time went away. But we, we will actively search for any grant we can get. And we have reached out to Walmart, for example, to see if they were starting back up their grants that they used to do quite a bit for us, but we'll continue to look.
Okay. Any other thoughts on the park master plan?
Excited.
I had one thing to ask. On the park master plan, there's the new logo. Is that the logo that the board would like us to follow with the parks?
I just assumed that's what we were doing from the meetings I went to. It's funny you asked that. I thought of that when I was reading through it this weekend.
I thought so, too. I just wanted clarification, so I didn't implement something that wasn't the direction of the board.
Do you, you guys all seen that, right? You know what it looks like?
I wanted to look at it.
Yeah, go ahead.
Are you referring to the green tree logo on the front?
I mean, I just, that's what I understood that was going to change to the logo.
Pam, can you see that one?
For the parks.
Yeah.
Just for parks.
Just for parks. Yeah, it's just parks.
Is that, do we need to do that? That seems unnecessary and costly prohibitive.
It carries the theme. So like, when we, if we put a new sign up, we would put that logo on.
When we changed, when we did the comp plan, we changed our logo.
I know, but then we're doing a new logo?
No, I mean, the city, yeah. Just the parks.
Does it have a separate logo for the department? I don't know.
I don't know.
It just seems confusing a little bit since we struggle so much with our branding anyways to not, you know what I mean? Like, I don't know. I don't have a strong opinion about it, but just I kind of have the same question.
Let that go to the Park Board, too.
Okay.
Yeah, they may.
Well, because if we do that, then that takes money because you're going to have to change all of your whatever, anything that has a logo on it, you're going to have to flip it, like switching logos is not.
They're all old logos already, so that is a good point to wait, yeah, to see what it is.
We would only activate whatever we were purchasing new to have whatever logo.
Gotcha, gotcha.
Yeah. And since we're talking about the Park Board, I mean, I had it at the end, but we're talking about the Park Board and the park master plan. One of the big things in there was about the Little League and then all the chatter about the Little League, the phone calls I get, the text messages, the ones Tracy gets, I don't know if others do, and it's just, it's just back and forth, back and forth. So I would really like to have the, whatever season we're in, have that season's board and presidents come to the Park Board meeting. So next week, whatever seasons we're in right now for Little League, they'll, they be there. It's all in a room. It's recorded. The public gets to hear what's going on. They get the true story. Because right now, you know, I mean, it's, the city's trying to take over Little League. No. Is the city going to take over Little League? No. You know, and it's just back and forth. So let's get them all in a room and figure out what everybody wants, instead of it just being back and forth. I don't, I don't think it'd be a good idea, but correct me if I'm wrong, to invite every season, because then it would just be a room full of a lot of noise and a lot of confusion because some of them run beautifully without having any assistance, correct?
Yes.
And that would be really hard to say, well, wait a minute, that doesn't have anything to do with you and move around the room.
And a lot of them are hard to contact when it's out of season.
Yeah.
Or if it's in their peak season, it's hard, hard as well, too, so.
Well, that's what, I
They're all like volunteers, right?
I mean, I think it'd be great to get, yeah, they are. I mean, I think it'd be great to get, even to get softball and baseball in the same rooms. They can share ideas and structures and stuff and then see how we can support them.
But I'm, whatever season we're in right now, which I don't know all of them that we're in, I mean, aren't we in cheer? So if we're in cheer, if we're in, what, all of them, include them all in that season at the Park Board meeting so that they can, we can hear what they need and how we can support them, and then the conversation can just be open and then it's not he said, she said.
Yeah.
It just works better that way, I think, but you guys can disagree if you want to.
No, I agree. It is hard because they're all volunteers.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I completely agree. I just think the odds of it actually happening.
Well, we're going to offer it so that it's not confusing of what is going on, especially with it being in the park master plan. When that gets released, people are going to say, oh, you really are trying to take over, and we're by no means taking over.
And we've currently received several feedback from all the questionnaires that we've sent out, so we, we are in contact with them.
Yes, sorry, and the email, you know, those, yeah. Okay. Okay. All right, so we're good, right, with everything? We're going to send it, you're going to send in at least five, top five, and then it'll go to the Park Board at next week's meeting? Okay. All right, so now let's go back to what the item was. It was for discussion, consideration, and possible action for the park master plan.
I make a motion to approve the 2025 City of Oak Grove Parks and Recreation Master Plan.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the 2025 City of Oak Grove first-ever parks master plan. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. It's a resolution, right? So it's Resolution 2501 for the record. The next item on the agenda is discussion, consideration, and possible action regarding a resolution amending the compensation plan for the City of Oak Grove.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So this is to amend the city's compensation plan to adjust the entry, ceiling, and step of each position to reflect a 2% cost of living adjustment or COLA. The 2% was budgeted in the 2025 budget. The proposed COLA adjustment would take effect the first pay period, first payroll in April. The proposed plan also increases the city's minimum wage to reflect Missouri's new minimum wage of $13.75. Just for reference, the Consumer Price Index from December of '23 through December of 2024 was 2.9%, and January of this year was 3%. In total, a 1% COLA adjustment is about $20,000 to $25,000 in the budget, so a 2% would be, you know, $40,000 to $50,000 across the general fund, water and sewer fund, and transportation fund as well. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions the board may have. Thank you.
Any questions for Matt?
I make a motion that we approve an increase to the city's compensation plan.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the city's compensation plan. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, and that is the Resolution Number 2502 for the record. The next item on the agenda is discussion, consideration, and possible action regarding approval of the 2024 Missouri Highway Safety Grant Submission for Impaired Drivers. Chief?
Be 2025 for the
It says 24, but I should have said 25, so my bad. I just read what I have.
Good evening, thank you, Mayor.
Yours doesn't say 25?
No, mine says.
I mean, 24?
Mine does.
Okay. Interesting. We all have a different ear.
Yes, yes.
Chief, the floor is yours.
Okay. This is the annual submission we make to Missouri State Highway Safety in regards to overtime reimbursement for working the, the roads in this particular grant for DWI/ DUI enforcement. We have put in for this every year. Last year, we did not receive the grant, but we still submit for it each year, hoping to, because this allows the officers to work that overtime to enforce DWI/ DUI enforced driving and such. The reason we did not receive it last year is to our benefit, DWI/ DUI is not a major occurrence in Oak Grove, and I'm thankful for that. I think it, it says a lot about our enforcement that we do already, and it's not that we're missing a lot of them, because we do get calls from citizens and the officers do see them, and we do have those arrests that do occur, but not such that it dwarfs other cities around us that do receive this. But we still put in for it because it does cover the training as well as the additional type-two instructors or technicians that we use for the machines that we have or the instruments that we have here in the department. So we're applying for this grant for the amount of $6,075, and this would be for fiscal year '26, so it would start October 1 of this year.
Okay. Any questions for Chief?
Have DUIs, DWIs, have they decreased, like, over the last 15 years?
Tremendously, yes.
I just, because it, you know, with Uber and
Yes, it has decreased across the board, even in the sense of, of the funding to, to go after it. We've also lost the ability within the state to do checkpoints and a lot of the aggressive proactive means of enforcing DWI or DUI enforcement. So it does come down to the individual departments to do their best
Yeah.
because there is no state funding for it outside of this.
Yeah. Thank you. I was just wondering.
I'll make a motion to approve the 2025 Missouri Highway Safety Program Grant Submission for Impaired Drivers Enforcement.
I second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the grant for the 2025 Missouri Highway Safety Program Grant Submission for Impaired Drivers. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. The next item on the agenda is discussion, consideration, and possible action regarding approval of the 2025 Missouri State Highway Program Grant Submission for Hazardous Moving Vehicles. Chief?
Thank you, Mayor. Now, this is the second part of what we put in for annually, and this one we do receive, and this one we do work on a regular basis because it is the matter of decreasing hazardous moving vehicle violations. This is regulated by the state in the sense that we have to work those high-impact, high-traffic areas that are of major complaint by the community, and we are tasked to make citizen contacts so many per hour. It doesn't say we have to write a ticket, but we have to make those contacts to lessen the aggressive driving, lessen the actions that may cause an accident or cause harm in the community. We've put in for $32,550 for this year. That is a little bit of an increase from previous years because the state is truly pushing to review, reduce traffic crashes, and they are now reimbursing at a double-time rate for officers to get out there and enforce the hazardous moving violations. So it does up the reimbursement, so we have asked for a little bit more as well as the equipment. We use this each year to, to buy new radar units or LiDAR units, as well as attend the training put on by the state for at least one officer each year so that they can find out about new traffic endeavors and, and techniques.
Nice. Thank you, Chief.
Mm-hmm.
Any questions for Chief?
So on this one, these are expenses that we would not incur unless we are granted the funds, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
And then it's a reimbursement for what we submit.
Okay.
So this allows, this allows you to pay your officers in areas where this is occurring more often? Is that my understanding?
Yes. So if we're taking a lot of crash reports in the Fourth and Broadway area, officers are going to come in and work HMV, and they're only going to be dedicated to working traffic enforcement while they're on the HMV hours. And so they'll set up in areas to slow traffic down, make traffic stops to educate, or issue citations if they feel it's necessary. We could do the same thing if we moved them over to Fifth Street or wherever there were complaints from the citizens. But it has to be an active enforcement. The officers cannot just go out and absorb overtime hours. They have to be making three contacts per hour in one way, shape, or form, and it doesn't say they have to write tickets, but they have to make three contacts an hour.
So you kind of set that up during, like, maybe, like, when traffic is high?
Oh, yeah, yeah. You don't want to be doing HMV at 3:00 in the morning. You're going to, you're going to be out there during rush hour traffic, and that's, that's a lot of what they do. Say, the SROs, they'll finish up their day there, and they go on to do HMV, because it's a perfect time to work from 3:00 to 6:00 or something of that nature.
So like, when they have to merge before the railroad tracks?
Yeah, I mean, it's wherever they can identify that there are problems that we have documented before.
Well, I'm glad you're able to. Is this one that you typically get, or is it like the other one?
Yes, yeah. HMV is a big push by Missouri in the sense of the only way we're going to reduce the crashes is if we're out there doing enforcement.
Yeah, it's one of those that, it seems, I don't respond to the community pages, but it seems to be something that we see more often. It's just something that seems to be happening.
Oh, yeah. If we could level out the hill coming down from 30th, we'd be a lot better.
Okay, that's a lot of questions I have.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I make a motion to approve the 2024 Missouri Highway Safety Program Grant Submission for HMV enforcement.
I second.
Redo that. It's 2025.
Okay, I'm reading, okay.
I am too.
2025. To read the whole thing again.
Yeah.
I make a motion to approve the 2025 Missouri Highway Safety Program Grant Submission for HMV enforcement.
I second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the Missouri Department Highway 2025 Grant Submission for Hazardous Moving Vehicles. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. The next item on the agenda is discussion, consideration, and possible action regarding a development agreement between the City of Oak Grove and the Safety Storage, Safety Storage South LLC. Matt?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So this is an agreement for the development of approximately 79 acres or 236 lots in the Edgewood Meadows subdivision. Just a little history on this property. The property was voluntarily annexed by the city at the request of the property owners in March of 2022. By code, annexed property retains its unincorporated zoning designation at the time of annexation. So in this case, the property was zoned ag. The property owner subsequently requested that the property be rezoned from ag to R1, and that request was granted in May of 2024. The applicant then came in and applied for a preliminary plat for the Edgewood Meadows subdivision, and that preliminary plat was approved by Planning and Zoning Commission on June 18 of last year. So the agreement for the board tonight stipulates that the developer must meet all applicable codes and ordinances for public improvements, including road, water, sewer, and stormwater design. In addition, the developer will require to widen Fifth Street and make improvements along the length of the development, including adding sidewalks, curbs, and gutter. So our code requires that developers enter into an agreement with the city for such public improvements prior to a final plat approval. So this is right in line with the steps of the development process. So the next step that would be before the planning commission and this board would be when the applicant comes in to request a final plat. Phase 1 of Edgewood Meadows includes 49 lots.
Okay.
So be happy to answer any question. Now, this agreement covers the entirety of the development, but the next steps in development would for them be, come in for final plat for Phase 1, which includes 49 lots, as well as track A and B for detention, as well as the clubhouse and pool. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Any questions on the development agreement?
Do they have a timeframe of when they will start and/or be done with the 49 lots? What are they?
I know that they are, they're ready to go. They're, I, you know, Phase 1 has been reviewed for civil infrastructure by the city's engineering firm OWN, has been approved. They've come in, and they've already paid for Phase 1 permitting. So Phase 1 is ready to go. Depending on this development agreement, they'll, you know, get equipment on site and shovels in the ground, and our code requires that this development agreement be approved prior to the final plat. So we're a little bit ahead in a way, getting this development agreement done now, but it's better to have it in now than, you know, a week before the final plat comes in. So I do know that they're anticipating having that getting built this year. I think if all goes well, the developer intends to have lots for sale by the end of this year. The development agreement includes, in each individual sections, is the water, sewer, stormwater streets, as well as having the amenities in that first tract finished prior to, you know, by the 75th building permit. So the city wouldn't issue any more building permits beyond that in Phase 2 until all those amenities are completed.
Matt, I'm just curious, is this the LLC that originally brought us the, the plat that?
Yeah, so you, it's the same, it's the same developer. They have different companies underneath them, but it's Ward Development. It's the same, yeah.
I was aware of that. I just found it interesting that they were using the Blue Springs Safety Storage as the developer name on it.
Yeah.
Where is Fifth Street going to be widened?
For the length of this development. So approximately from Oak Grove Stations and then just short of Oaks of Edgewood, there is a five-acre tract that is in unincorporated county. There's a farmhouse there, so Fifth Street would be widened from that house all the way to Oak Grove Stations subdivision.
From my grandparents' house all the way to, I think, it's my grandparents'.
So Stations is the one that's the, the subdivision that has the horseshoe.
Okay. And how many lanes is it going to be? Is it still going to be just two lanes?
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
Still just two lanes, but widen it to be a city. Because right now, it's just a county road, so it's, you know, it was when we annexed Fifth Street, you know, Robinson, it's been widened along those areas that have been developed by the city. So by our code, they'll have to improve, do the half-road improvements for the section that they have bought.
Okay.
Can you go back? Did you say regarding the amenities, those don't have to be done until the 75th permit is issued? Is that what you said? So they could finish the whole, the whole Phase 1?
Right, right, and then start, yeah, right, so that was part of.
Before they could even build the clubhouse.
Correct, yeah, yeah. So that was to let them get into starting Phase 2, but not complete it until the amenities are in. And there's five total phases.
Do they have to shut it, the road down? Like, are they going to redirect traffic?
Potentially, it would, it would need to be shut down for a period of time, yeah.
There's several other ways to get in and out of there. You know, it's not, you can go back through Oaks of Edgewood, you can go Robinson. I mean, you can, you can go several ways around.
Is there a concern with the turning off of Broadway onto Fifth Street in that intersection? By adding all of these houses, or no? Remember, we talked about that when we did the.
Yeah.
Study, because it didn't reach the.
That's, yes, I did. Thank you so much for that, Matt.
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you, Matt. Any other questions?
I'll make a motion to approve the development agreement between the City of Oak Grove and Blue Springs Safety Storage South LLC for Edgewood Meadows R1.
We have a motion and a second to approve the development agreement for City of Oak Grove and Blue Springs Safety Storage South LLC. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes. Did you get that, Kim? Okay. The next item on the agenda is the presentation regarding the street program. Cory, you're up. This is an exciting time for all of us. We get graphs, and we get to show people. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. So, yeah, tonight, we have put together the 2025 Street Preservation Program presentation for the board to look over and, you know, give me your opinions if you see something we need to maybe change. But the streets were all evaluated during the off-season and mapped out on GIS. One of those maps in your packet reflects those current conditions. We continue to make excellent progress in updating the streets citywide. The streets slated for this year's proposed overlay are highlighted in orange in your maps, in your packets, rather. The work this year will, similar to last year, will include the necessary base repair, ADA sidewalk ramp, updates or new installations if they're missing, striping if required, and curb work. Only designated curbs that are bad enough and deteriorating or impeding flow will be replaced. The estimated lane miles this year are 9.04. Also, in this year's overlay is three bid alternates. These will actually be, go out as one alternate for bid, but they're kind of broke down into three categories to explain this a little bit. So one of those is the Old City Hall parking lot. It desperately needs attention for a couple of reasons. One of them is just old, you know, it's just time. It needs, it needs attention. An important thing about that one is when we do pave it, we're going to try to wedge it, so to speak, to where water will shed away from the building a little bit better. It's pretty flat in that area, as you're probably aware. Another bid alternate, number two, is the Public Works South Maintenance Building Facility. If you don't know where that is, that's at 11th and Clinton. It is all gravel. The project is to provide the employees a paved area to park their personal vehicles and, as well as the driveway through their back storage lot. We have two gates, or they have two gates. This driveway will provide access in and out that gate with another paved driveway into their building. The third alternate is the Davis Center. It, too, is badly deteriorating, need and repair work. Further decay of that one is just going to ramp up the costs for the base failures. It's starting to develop. You know, it's, it's at the point in areas where it's going to start causing trip hazards for foot traffic. We certainly don't need that. So, yeah, I think that's, that's pretty well it on the overlay. I can answer any questions the board might have on, on the proposed streets or the alternates.
Thank you, Cory. Any questions, ladies?
Do you know how mu, roughly, how many lane miles we got done last year? Estimate?
Last year, roughly, yes, it would have been about the same. I feel like it was maybe around 10.
It was around 10. I can't remember. Okay, thank you. Yeah, it's a lot. Yeah.
Yeah.
I make a motion to, wait, do we approve it?
It's presentation only.
I approve it anyways.
Yeah.
I approve your presentation.
We, you know, I will say it every time, we thank our citizens and all of you that voted for the use tax for us to continue to have a roads program. It's just, it's just wonderful. Any other questions for Cory? All right. The next item on the agenda is discussion, consideration, and possible action regarding the streetlights for the Oaks of Edgewood Phase 14 and 15. Cory, the rest of the night's you, so.
We'll try to make her quick. Yep, so additional street lighting for the Oaks of Edgewood. I'm sorry, my computer is a little slow at catching up here.
That's okay.
Phases 14 and.
15.
Well, was it the Oaks of Edgewood that is next on your agenda, or Rustic Heights?
Yes, mine says discussion for streetlights, Oaks of Edgewood Phases 14 and 15. Are we out of order?
It might be me. I'm trying to get there.
You're last two? I thought we were on Oaks of Edgewood, what more?
I got Rustic Heights as being next.
So mine goes straight from street overlay to Rustic Heights?
We all have a different agenda, huh?
That's so crazy. That's the overlay, and then the streetlights is Rustic Heights.
Yeah, oh, okay.
Okay, so I can, I can move to the next one and come back.
No, that's fine.
Can you give me two? Okay.
Okay, so the Oaks of Edgewood Phases 14 and 15 include the addition of six new streetlights for, on the new, the new phases there, so.
That's the new phases to the west, right?
The new phases to the west, that's correct.
Did you say six, Cory?
Yeah.
Six, yes.
The, they're just flipped in the packet. The Rustic Heights was listed first.
Okay, I was reading the one that's up.
So Phases 14 and 15 will increase our monthly light bill by $209.32.
Okay.
And with that, I'd be happy.
All right, does anyone? Yeah, I like that. Anyone have any questions about the streetlights for Oaks of Edgewood's 14 and 15 phases?
Looks like they're very well placed.
This I need a motion for.
I make a motion we approve the addition of six new streetlights for Phase 14, 15 in Oaks of Edgewood subdivision.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the streetlights for Oaks of Edgewood Phases 14 and 15. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. The next item on the agenda would be discussion, consideration, and possible action regarding additional streetlights at Rustic Heights Phase 2.
Thank you.
Yes.
Yes, so same thing. Phase 2 wasn't completed, as I mentioned last time, when we brought Phase 1 to the board. To my surprise, they got Phase 2 done rather quickly. So, yes, so the monthly payment for that one is $95.37. That will add three lights and finish out Rustic Heights. As well as Phases 14 and 15 of Oaks of Edgewood, the developer has prepaid some of the costs for the street lighting when he, on his development permit. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Oh, so on Rustic Heights, so that will complete the streetlights that need to go in for all the streets that are in there right now?
That's correct.
Okay.
Nice.
Yes.
Nice, that's good. Thank you. Any other questions? I would need a motion on this one also.
I make a motion that we approve the additional streetlights for Rustic Heights Phase 2.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the additional streetlights for Rustic Heights Phase 2. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. The next item on the agenda is discussion, consideration, and possible action regarding agreement with the City of Oak Grove and CAT Excavation for the White Oaks Pump Station. Cory?
Yes, thank you. Request for proposals was publicly published in the Oak Grove Focus on January 2, 2025, to begin receiving bids for the sanitary sewer lift station replacement located at 39601 North Gillespie Road. The station is badly deteriorated and was not installed to APWA or city standards at the time. It was recommended in the 2015 wastewater master plan update that was performed by Olson Associates to be replaced due to the safety concerns and overall condition. In April of 2022, Olson was also hired to, or again hired, to provide a design and cost estimate. That is in your packet there. The bid opening was held here at City Hall on January 28, where we received just one total bid from CAT Excavation Incorporated. A total of 10 companies were notified of the upcoming project, but failed to submit bids. That bidder's list of the 10 that were notified is also in your packet. The capital improvement project was included in the 2025 approved budget, and city staff is recommending moving forward with CAT Excavation to complete the lift station project. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Cory. Any questions, ladies?
How long was the timeline on this project?
To complete it?
Yeah.
So once they break ground, which, I don't know, maybe four to six weeks max. You know, there's a few variables in there, waiting on stuff to come in, but once they break ground, they'll have everything in stock already. And so four to six weeks, and it could even be quicker than that.
I make a motion that we approve the agreement between City of Oak Grove and CAT Excavation for the White Oaks Pump Station Replacement Project.
I second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the agreement between City of Oak Grove and CAT Excavation for White Oaks Pump Station. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. The next item on the agenda is information reports. Matt, do you have one?
No, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Chris? Thank you. Mark?
Interesting weather for tomorrow and Wednesday. Rain tomorrow, tomorrow, or early Wednesday morning, snow, maybe up to a half an inch.
Oh, my gosh.
That's what we forecast right now. It won't stick long. The, for the next day is 38 forecast, but along with that, we get very high winds of maybe gusts of 55 miles an hour here, and maybe 70 miles an hour. and maybe 70 miles an hour further northwest, St. Joseph and that area. Blizzard conditions for that area also, early Wednesday morning. Hopefully, nobody has to travel during that.
So you pretty much told us it's rain, snow, and tornado season, all in one?
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, it's, it's kind of like having a severe thunderstorm.
Yeah.
But we're better off than the deep south because they're in enhanced risk tomorrow, four out of five risk, no, excuse me, three out of five risk for severe thunderstorms and tornadoes. So they'll probably have very rough weather tomorrow.
Okay. Thank you, Mark, thank you. Chief? Cory? Kim? Scott?
Just because of Mark's great report, we may be delaying the playground removal this week to next week. But I just want to give you an update on that, that's it.
Okay, thank you. Rachel?
No report.
Kelly?
No report.
Melissa?
I did want to tell you that my daughter attended the first Youth Advisory Council for Truman Heartland. And she will be looking out for Oak Grove's interests as far as grants. So just letting you know that we have somebody out there looking for, looking out for us.
We do, it's really good.
And she's been made a team leader on her first night, so she's got like two meetings a month and then a whole bunch of volunteer hours that she's dedicated herself to. So if you need anything or have questions about grants, they oversee a bunch of money, the Youth Advisory Council itself does. So they have their own endowment they oversee. So just letting you know that we got somebody out there looking out for us on that now, so. And she's excited, so, yeah, anyway, just wanted to let you know that that went down this week.
Yeah, to, can I tag on that? So to fill you in, Oak Grove has not been represented at Truman Heartland. And if you went to Gala, Galas, when we go to that, you'll see there's, all the other cities have students in the youth program, and so we finally have, Oak Grove is represented. So thank you, Ava, for that, yes. Tracy?
No report.
No report.
No report. I just have a question, on that park master plan, will it go up to the website? Will we like load it and people can look at it? Okay, and then, you know, where it says every so often, blank page, this is supposed to be here? Can those maybe be removed or something, or not? Yeah, it's just kind of, I don't know, just a thought.
Think it's over, yeah.
Yeah, what are you hiding or whatever? But it does look like it's ending, you have to keep scrolling, so I just thought about that. And then, I don't know, I just, I've, Melissa's mentioned it to me a couple times. I've mentioned it maybe a few times, but I know it wasn't in the park master plan, but Wayfinder signs, we've talked about those in the past. I don't know if Melissa's actually talking about this, but now that we have the park master plan done and we, and if they decide on the right, you know, logo they want, maybe having signs that, that are color-coordinated or something that guide you around saying, you know, maybe all the park signs are green on the Wayfinder that say our parks are a different direction. Maybe the city government are blue, and the school is orange or black or something. And just, so they're consistent, but they all have the same logos on them. We have two and, we have four in town, but they all have different logos. Well, two different logos.
Is that common in other communities? I just feel like I've never seen...
Wayfinder signs?
Signs like that.
I mean, every city?
I have never noticed them.
Yeah.
It's really good for people with disabilities and people that...
Travel. Yeah, the people that come into our town to visit, yeah.
And new, new people, new residents, it's really good.
Yeah. All right, all right, looking for a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion, we adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.